It is six o'clock. Let's open our meeting. Today is Tuesday, December 9th. First item on our agenda is the minutes of November 25th.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes with some adjustments.
You want a second motion?
Sure.
Okay, what are your adjustments?
I just wanted to clarify under the other business with the Phase 3 contracts, I'm not sure if we have the correct years. It says 27, 28, and then 29 and 30.
We did split them.
Yeah, we're skipping a year.
Jim was, um...
So I just wanted to clarify that those years were correct.
29, 30. I believe it was away with, I'll check my notes and I did watch it again, but I'll look at it again.
Okay, so on page 1, yeah, for years, I just want to make sure we're correct.
It should be 27 through 30.
And it said two years' worth only?
Fiscal 27, fiscal 28.
This only identifies fiscal 20. It says 7 slash 8.
Yeah, that really should be 28, 29.
I need to say fiscal 27, fiscal 28, fiscal 29, fiscal 29.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. The FY is missing.
Just need to put in page 2. Down at the very end, the contractor's liability insurance and work paid for. It says made by. Work paid. That's the working side fund. Okay.
Any other discussion? All in favor of approving the minutes as amended?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Next on our agenda are some resignations. We should probably take each one individually.
Make a motion to accept the resignation of Fire Chief Richard LaPierre.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to accept the resignation of Westbrookfield Fire Department Lieutenant Kenneth Collett.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I don't know.
So, all in favor? Any discussion?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Make a motion to accept the resignation of Westbrookfield Fire Department On-call Member Michael Martel.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to accept the resignation of Westbrookfield Fire Department Member Holly Collett.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to accept the resignation of Emergency Management Director Richard LaPierre.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to accept the resignation of Emergency Management Assistant Director Steve Pioter.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to accept the resignation of Emergency Management Assistant Director Richard Dick LaPierre Senior.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Make a motion to accept the resignation of Emergency Management Volunteer William Moerski.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to accept the resignation of Emergency Management Volunteer James LaPierre.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to accept the resignation of Emergency Management Volunteer Henry Rona.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to accept the resignation of Emergency Management Volunteer Jenny Davis.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We accept all these resignations. And thank everyone here for their time and effort that they put into the duties while filling these positions.
May I ask a question?
Question.
Is running the fire department now in emergency management, are we relying on mutual aid now?
Right now, we're relying on mutual aid. I think we've, that's actually the next item on our agenda. Is the discussion of fire department operations and fire chief, emergency management director positions. So, right now, we're relying on mutual aid and...
Yeah. So, the neighboring towns and also I believe Dennis from New Braintree, our New Braintree Fire Chief is expected to come in this evening. But in the meantime, so the neighboring area communities, the fire chiefs have all been in discussion. They're aware of the situation. And with guidance, with discussion with Chief LaPierre and Brookfield's chief. Come on in. Hi Dennis. A hot seat. This is Chief Lieutenant from New Braintree. So I was just saying that the area chiefs, and you've been in conversation with them as well. So, Brookfield, North Brookfield, New Braintree, East Brookfield, and Warren. Several of the chiefs have reached out, communicated with me. And what we did is we did contact dispatch to make sure that alarm calls, CO calls, car calls, any of those, that they tone an engine from Brookfield and from Warren for the daytime hours. Because the majority of, well, I think all of your daytime coverage is no longer on the department. And so you ultimately don't have coverage for the daytime. So it's imperative to get moving on this as soon as possible. So dispatch will be toning out engines from both. And if, if for any reason during the call, the dispatch center feels like, hmm, a little uncertain, we'd rather the overkill and tone it out to four. Because the thing of it is, is you're going to have to make up the time, the travel time to make sure. So that's been done. All other calls, structured fires, will go automatically to a second alarm. And so the chiefs in the area, you know, one of the biggest messages to send forth is that the residents, business owners, homeowners in Westbrookfield are covered and are safe. Everyone took this very seriously and they are willing to help. And that's just the way, that's how fire departments work. Because you have a mission and it's property and lives, right? So, so that's, that's the update I have there. I have been provided all the contact information for all of those area chiefs who have been gracious to say, you have any questions, reach out and give a call. When, I'll back up a little bit to say when the initial resignation was received from the fire chief and then subsequent resignations were received of daytime and very experienced. I guess it was a knee jerk reaction, but I know Dennis, I've worked with him before. And so I was like, Dennis!
How many people resigned?
Huh?
How many people resigned?
Right now, we have one, two, three, four from...
The fire chief and then, and then three firefighters. How many total were in the department? How many are on the roster?
So I, from my understanding is that you have 11 people that is planning on staying.
Okay.
Which is great.
Yeah, that is great.
So you're going to want to try to get on top of this as quick as possible so that you don't have any more collateral damage.
Yep.
So I'll let you guys keep going and I'll talk after.
Okay. And it was my understanding that, you know, it's pretty much the day, day hours aren't covered. But also that maybe there were four remaining, four or five remaining that have the experience or ability to enter a structured fire.
I don't know.
I'm not sure.
Okay.
Yep. So that, that's just information that I've been provided. So the other thing on top of that is that this is a really busy time of year for our fire chiefs. You've got inspections that need to be done. Some of these inspections really are on a clock. So those have to be taken care of and you really need, you need to keep the lights on. You need to keep the trucks rolling and, and all of that. So you need somebody in there in the meantime. I've also been provided the contact information of Fire Chief Coleman out of Auburn. He serves as District 7's representative in the Massachusetts Fire Chiefs Association. So he's always a good resource from what I'm told. But when I reached out and I spoke with Dennis, he was like not willing for a permanent situation. But that he'd be more than happy to, to pitch hit, help us out, speak to you also about, you know, I know there had been the mention of sharing services in different departments and that. So that might be something that Dennis could shed a little bit of light on. And so I guess I would turn it over to the board and...
All right.
And Dennis?
So Theresa did reach out to me last week. Unfortunately, my son's been in the hospital since last week. I really just got home two hours ago.
Sorry to hear that.
So it's been a little bit rough. So when she reached out to me, she asked about the regionalization that we have with Hardwick. So what we do with Hardwick is the chief and I, you know, during the day, sometimes we get one person, sometimes we get six, like sometimes we get four, we don't know how many people we're going to get. So we sat down like we're going to do something that better serve our communities. So what we decided to do is an automatic mutual aid agreement. And what that does is whenever we have a high priority call where we think we may need more than, you know, five or six people, they dispatch out both towns automatically. So it could be any type of fire, both towns are dispatched. Motor vehicle crash with entrapment, life flight, anything serious, both towns are automatically dispatched. If it's during the day and let's say there's a call in, I'm going to use my town just to be safe. So let's say there's a fire alarm in New Braintree, nobody's around. They tone it out once, on the second tone, they dispatch both departments. So that way that we have people coming. The guys train together, we merge our training nights together, so everybody's training together. Everything's kind of incorporated into kind of one, but we're still two separate departments. The reason being is because a lot of call firefighters do it to help with their communities. So now you go add another community, another 120 calls, the guys that are doing it for their community that are working full-time are like, enough is enough. Like, I'm not doing this, I'm out of here. And then you start to lose people. And it just keeps the integrity of the department. I mean, they have, each department has associations like that they're proud of. They go do fundraisers, they do different events. So it kind of keeps it a little bit more personal, but also we're helping each other out at the same time. When we're purchasing equipment now, we're going to try to do it more together. So like when we replace air packs, they're both due to be replaced at the same time. We could buy 30 more versus, we buy 10 and they buy 20, we can get a bit of a discount. Same thing with turnout gear and stuff like that. We have the jaws of life where they really don't have a good set. So instead of them buying them, we have them. So it's kind of a partnership that way too, but we're not, we're not really regionalized. Mainly for that reason, because you can't lose your call guys, because once the call guys are gone, what do you have next? So one issue with you guys being involved with us on that is we're in different fire districts. Different map. It's hard to see, I did it in the last couple minutes here, so I can... I could do a little bit better for you if I had more time. District 7 is the district that you guys are in, it's in the green in the bottom there. So Westbrookfield is in the northwest portion of District 7. New Braintree is in the southwest district, portion of District 8. So that would be a little bit of conflict. New Braintree and Harriker both in District 8, so that's convenient for us. So you guys could look at maybe talking to Warren if that was something you guys wanted to do. But they're in a different dispatch center.
Well, it looks like Warren's in 11.
Different. No, they're in District 7. Some of the map might have been...
There's a line going through there, so that line...
That line there is our dispatch, the towns that we dispatch for.
Okay. We were just looking through the color.
Holland, Wales, Brimfield, East Brookfield, Brookfield, North Brookfield, East Brookfield, PJ 7, Harriker, that's who the dispatch, the dispatches for. So that would be a little bit difficult if you were to work with Warren. Not impossible, but a little bit difficult on our dispatchers. Where they would have to call, do it in certain places and things to get messed up. And time is of the essence too. Westbrookfield and Brookfield, that would be an option. I don't know what any of their response would be to that. But I do caution you, if you're looking to regionalize, I would take a step back. Figure out what you've got right now. Maybe have a meeting with the guys. Or take that, whether the chair wants to be involved or Theresa, you want to be involved. Start a meeting, I think maybe on Monday nights, just go to meetings, see, you know, how many people are looking at how Steve, what they tend to... And trying to figure out who to get. And all the issues that have to be looked at. To help get those and see if there's...
Appreciate it.
I have, you know, a full-time firefighter from the Mass Fire Authority. Prior to that, I did work in the union as a union president. And I worked on the opposite side, on the management side. So I have experience dealing with both of those. However, like Theresa said, it is the end of the year. It's probably the worst time for anybody to be doing this. It's budget season. So I do have a lot to deal with in New Braintree. I do about 10 to 20 hours a week in New Braintree and then I get a 10-hour a week fire prevention officer who does all the inspections. Actually, he's essentially my right-hand man. He does everything that I can do. And that seems, I think that's going to be an issue that you guys are going to have. A lot of depth going down with experience on the fire reports, payroll, any of that. Where, you know, I have four people that do fire reports for me. So if I'm gone, it's not an issue, it continues.
And so with regard to that, I'm aware that there had been some issues with the fire reports that had been generated and Holly had to go back into the system and fix all of those that had been done by somebody else. And so there is a backlog currently. I'm also aware that there is an inspection application sitting on the desk up there that just literally came in yesterday. So I think that an interim is going to be absolutely necessary because it's just the fire chief, right, or an inspector that could go and do...
It could be the designee too. It could be, you could designate anybody. I just don't know that you have anybody right now that is able to do it or willing to do it.
I think it was just Rich.
Yeah.
Rich kind of did everything. Didn't really mitigate.
Well, without getting up there and looking and knowing more of the background, it's hard to really say how much it's going to evolve or, you know, if one of the guys is willing to step up and help out, it makes things a lot easier. And that, you might have that person in there, I don't, I don't know. I mean, it doesn't have to be somebody that's been doing it for 20 years. I mean, it's, a lot of it's just paperwork. So if you have somebody that has some problems, it's not, you know, it's timing. That's what it comes down to. I would recommend that we have, you have another meeting with, you know, the other chiefs said they would be involved too if you wanted. Chief Martel and Chief LaVoy. The three of us are pretty much on the same wavelength.
So are you recommending a meeting with the three chiefs and the current department?
Whatever the rest want to do. But I think that something needs to be done soon and something, there needs to be a meeting with the guys.
You said they meet every Monday?
They meet Monday nights, yeah. I would recommend doing that because I might feel, you know, the guys feel that...
Really certain I can attend Monday? Uh, I can't. Can you go on Monday?
I think the problem is there's still a couple bad apples that are going to force out some more individuals from what I've been hearing.
Yeah, I think we should still meet with them though.
I think it's important to have a conversation.
Yeah.
We could have started somewhere.
I've heard both, so I would plant something in the middle so guys...
I can do Monday maybe.
You can do Monday.
No.
Taking that meeting?
Yeah. Six o'clock?
Is that what they normally do? Six o'clock?
I think so, yeah. I think so.
I don't know.
I can double check.
Okay.
A captain or somebody that has hours too, that can do the fire reports, do the training, and, you know, also is kind of able to do inspections and share some workload. Then you're not paying benefits and stuff like that too. It's kind of the way we're set up in New Braintree. It doesn't mean the right way, but it works for us. I think it would work for you guys too. There are people that would be interested in doing it, I'm pretty confident. Then you do within your districts, you have District 7 is Chief Coleman from Auburn. He's great. The different districts and then the Mass Fire Chiefs Association does have chiefs that come in and do these types of things. My understanding is it's fairly expensive for a small town. Don't quote me, but I believe it's around $2,400 a week.
Wow. That is expensive.
You're saying for interim?
Yeah. Through the Fire Chiefs Association. But you're getting a professional chief that could come in and do, you know, maybe some things that need to be done. Sometimes you could get the wrong one too and drive the rest of the people out the door too. So, you know, you're a small town like New Braintree that you kind of got to put some effort into who you're putting up there. But there is people out there that, you know, would do it too.
Theresa, is the executive session we have at 6:30 to talk about the chief's position? How we want it to look forward?
The executive session is actually to do with the UOPs and all the legal matters.
Okay. So we can discuss now if we'd like, if we'd like this, the chief's position to look forward. Presently, it's a full-time chief.
Well, no, it's 28 hours.
Well, it's full-time.
Your full-time is 32 hours or more, I believe. But it is a benefited position.
Yeah.
So yeah, you would want to, you're going to want to make a decision when you post the job, that you would want to make a decision on what you'd be looking at for hours and, you know...
You must remember we're on the hiring craze too.
Yeah, but this is...
We haven't got there yet.
Yeah, we haven't got there.
We just want to let you know that we're voting on it.
This is one of those positions that we kind of have to have. But I would prefer to see it roll back to what it was prior to Rich joining. Go back like you said to 19 hours. It was a part-time position. 19 hours.
Once you get to 20, it's benefited. And so that's where the line gets drawn as far as encouraging somebody to apply for it if there's benefits. If there's benefits, you might have more candidates, more qualified candidates that are willing to take the job, 20 or more. If you go less than 20, it's somebody that doesn't need the benefits is the candidate you're going to get.
That's up to you guys. I think you're going to get decent candidates, whether you're doing it that way. I do know one person that's interested, that would be very well good, so...
Are they looking for benefits?
Yeah. It's not me.
Are you sure?
Definitely not me.
Bring the brothers together. Reese and Fire.
We're two different people.
Would you be looking to post an interim to get somebody in there immediately and continue?
You don't really have to post for an interim.
I'm sorry, I'm chasing the fire department now for a chief that is capable of handling that job.
Of anyone in there?
Anyone in the fire department right now.
No, I wouldn't agree with you. I wouldn't hire internally.
No, no, no. Internally, I said interim.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Getting an interim person, not we're getting an interim person in there.
I think we need an interim from another town. Dennis said he'd be willing to help out in, in the interim. Right, not along, not along.
As long as I can get somebody to help me.
Yeah.
Somebody with the bills or...
Would you be opposed to working with Chief LaVoy? No, I think I've talked to him a couple times.
I wish I was working with him.
Yeah.
But I mean, we...
I mean, he could do the whole thing if he wants.
You do not, legally, you do not have to post for an interim, right? And I wouldn't, I wouldn't, you'd take a whole lot of time in figuring that out. I would get, get somebody ASAP. I was just trying to figure out how to find somebody.
If you're willing to do that, then I would do that. But yeah, you're going to want to move on it pretty quickly and we want to get the job posted.
I personally would like to see the meeting come down with Dennis, Chief LaVoy, the other chiefs, figure out what we can do to hold down the fort and so we can find a good person that will bring us in the right direction.
What do you want that position to look like though?
Be part-time. I'm going with what Dennis is recommending. A part-time, someone that's going to bring on a strong captain or deputy chief, a system that is training with the guys, knows how to move forward and do all the inspections and already have like a flight car here or something of the sort. Correct.
I'd rather have the, I'd rather bring the position down in hours so you could have two.
Yeah.
It makes more sense and that way one's covering the other.
It makes more sense. That way, one's covering the other and you've got a backup for it. It makes more sense.
That's how we justify.
Yeah.
It's depending, expanding the role the way we did, was not having the captain position.
Yeah.
All right. Uh, is that something we need to vote on, Teresa? So the, do we have to vote to change the hours or change the role?
Yeah, in your, in your motion, I would definitely do that, absolutely. I make a motion to post the fire chief's position as a 19-hour position. Do we wanna also do the second position or we're just gonna hold off on that?
Well, I think just hold off on it.
Yeah.
Let the chief make his decision.
Exactly. Let the new chief pick his captain.
And to post as soon as possible.
Second?
Second.
I'm assuming it's the same pay rate, hourly pay rate?
Yeah. Yeah, same hourly pay. Hold on, Teresa?
Aye.
All right, all right. Um, thank you, Dennis.
And if you wanna figure out the interim after we meet on the next time there, either Chief myself or Chief LaVoy or, you know, a mixture of whatever, we can figure that out.
Yeah, we need to do that. Yeah. Do you wanna make some phone calls, Teresa? Do you want us to set a meeting with the three of them to have a conversation or how do you wanna do it?
I think Chief LaVoy is open to hearing something. I don't, he's not saying he wants like the job. He's willing to, I mean, I can call him instead of the meeting if you're having it next week. I mean, when are you, Fran, are you having, your kids in hospital?
I'm gonna probably make myself available for Monday night so we can meet-
I appreciate that.
-the members of the department and-
Do you wanna say for Monday night if the chiefs can be there, I'll be there to see what conversation-
Well, if you, if you both are there, then we have to post it as a meeting.
Why don't we post it? You're on the safe side? So that way, if the two of us are there, it's okay. It's not a problem. We can see what we can get done on Monday night.
Yeah, we're not gonna abandon, yeah, I mean, if there's an issue.
No, no, but that way we can see if there's, there's issues that we need to figure out and do anything else.
Yeah.
In the meantime. A meeting at the fire station. Correct.
You may wanna have the meeting at the fire station and then come down here after. For a second meeting to, with the chiefs to discuss the interim position.
Yeah, so we might want to, I suppose, at different times. Okay.
You reach out to the other chiefs, Teresa?
Yep. Yep, I'll do that tomorrow.
So we have an executive session at 6:30 and we have somebody on Zoom call with us. So we do have to ask everyone to leave the room with the executive session. All right, we're back at an open session. I'll thank everybody for their patience while we took care of some business. I wanna go back to item three on our agenda, which was the department operations, the management director positions. I didn't, I, I think, if you had anything else to say, we, we were set on the posting and we're set on basically the posting and how we wanna handle the interim until then.
And we'll have a meeting on Monday with the staff.
Okay. Uh, the next item on our agenda is the donations for acceptance, anonymous donation for the town common and police department donation.
So Diane had a lead, apparently, but she gave me the information on it. There's an anonymous donation of $20,000.
Wow.
Specifically, they wanted it to go toward the fountain.
Oh.
Um, into the gift account, the fountain.
Oh, okay, good.
And into the gift account. So she would want your just approval to accept this anonymous donation.
I'll make a motion to accept the $20,000 anonymous donation.
Let's get that fountain working.
Much gratitude.
Let's get that fountain working. A second.
Any discussion here? All in favor?
Thank you very much.
Aye.
Aye.
And thank you to the anonymous donor. It's truly appreciated. There's a police department donation?
Yeah. Ms. Sarah, we wanted to donate a thousand dollars. It was a legacy donation. I don't want to put any restrictions on it. And we're also very grateful and full of gratitude for that. And we really didn't miss anything.
Next one.
I make a motion to accept a thousand dollar, sorry, a thousand dollar donation.
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. donations accepted with gratitude.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda, Doug Blood appointment as traffic constable. Stick to that.
Yeah, so we, we, my first came here in 2023, we had 53 or 54 details for the whole year. And we, we had 14 details just the other day on the one day. We're averaging in January 120 details a month. So we're just really overwhelmed with details. We have other towns helping us out, but we're just trying to get some, some more traffic constables and Doug's qualified and started after January 1. Doesn't cost you anything, so.
Can you define doesn't cost us anything?
Zero, it's free 99. No, they have to buy their own uniforms. They have to get their own doctor's note to say they can perform a duty. He already did that for the year, for the Harbor Master.
Okay.
So as a traffic constable, it, it doesn't cost anything. In fact, it gives us a better shot at getting the 10% administrative fee on state jobs. So for the private contractors, you get that 10% administrative fee and the more guys I have.
So their hourly wage is being paid by whichever contractor, state, whatever detail they're working for. Is that they're reimbursing the town for those dollars?
Yep. The only town the town would pay him is if he was working a highway detail. So, you know, the highway, you know, they'd be paying us or they'd be paying him. Like there's no extra money coming out of the coffers.
I'll make a motion to appoint Doug Blood as a traffic constable.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next on our agenda is the Westbrook field holiday schedule revisited.
So-
What did we do?
Make sense of this. What I've done is I've put down what we had as what we agreed upon. The second page is what it would change to if we were taking off the holidays that will come in and roll back and because it's confused.
There's a handbook that details certain pieces.
And the second, after that, I did put in the 2003 handbook, so you can see highlighted in pink and purple there. And it indicates the days that you would get off, part-time and full-time people. Probably get it, but yeah.
So this would be for all non-union?
Right.
So the only, so that's what I'm trying to clarify. If the handbook says one thing, that the union contract for those employees have something else, we're gonna have half the staff. Fair balance.
It could be, yeah.
It could be a combination of both, depending on which.
Yeah. Yeah, really, just get my mistake. I'm just getting the whole thing so you have the context of everything. So it just specifies-
1981, oh my word.
Okay. Which I added a Juneteenth in '21.
Yeah. Those on Sunday, the following Monday, we take holiday. That's on Saturday, the previous Friday, we do. Okay.
But how we have the policy before, but if you don't work on Friday, it applies for falls on the Friday, it applies for the Monday, the Thursday. So do we just, do we just take it off?
So if you work Monday to Thursday and the holiday falls on Friday, you're not gonna get an X today.
Exactly. Exactly.
Because you weren't contracted for that day.
Correct.
And we also, at the same time, so I think that had received a question, which is what you're looking at now. And yet we did receive another concern that was raised similar is that only those who normally work on Fridays get the Thursday Thanksgiving and get Friday Thanksgiving holiday. So those folks are getting paid two holidays per that policy. And then a follow-up concern was raised that you must work the day before and the day after in order to receive the holiday.
Yeah.
And so how does that work for those not scheduled to work on a Saturday?
Maybe Monday.
Yet, yet the Friday as holiday regardless of not being at work on Saturday.
Their next scheduled workday would be-
So I think this is so-
Right. It's just the way this phrase, it's, yeah.
Yeah.
So old and maybe it was done at a time, I don't know.
Well, it is old. It's, we think it might, people worked Monday through Friday back then, so it made sense and, you know, but now-
It needs to be redone.
It really does. But we have to have some, we have to make a decision on how we wanna address it this year.
And regardless, the board can make, you can vote and make any change that you desire.
This is what we came up, I was gonna, we took this out, we would put this, that we would take this out. So that was my changes, what we would be taking. It would end up in this if we were to follow 2003. It is confusing to think about.
Right. Because even according to the handbook, the holiday, the Fourth of July, for instance, is on a Saturday. Your handbook says if it's on a Saturday, you get the Friday. But that doesn't mean if you don't work Friday, you also get the Thursday.
Right. And that's why we took this out. So it wouldn't have pained to people who then work Monday through Thursday. Because it really benefited Friday employees.
Yeah.
And either way.
It wouldn't benefit, so on the Fourth of July, there's no paid time off for anybody working-
Monday through Thursday.
In the town hall.
It works Monday.
Unless they work a Friday.
Well, we're generally not open on Friday.
And they're scheduled to, right. Yeah. But if some of them are under the union contract, it probably says, it might have different languages. I'm sure it does.
Do you recall what the union contract says?
No, no. There's so many of them, so. I'm just thinking either the union contract covers-
The union follows, the union follows the union contracts. We follow our own contracts. Employees are paid by the union, employee rate skipped by the union and agreed by the town.
Well, because we'll have the holiday specified with the language, but the handbook doesn't cover the other people that are not in union.
Right, yeah.
I'm just trying to not have apples and oranges.
Yeah.
So we really need to, it looks like the ones that we need to really address are the June and the July. It's coming up because everything else is pretty much falling on Thursday already.
Yeah, because the January, the June where it falls on.
So we're up to June.
Right.
Before. So-
I mean, we can revisit it next year.
I was gonna say, to be honest with you, I'd like to see the union contract piece and be consistent.
Okay.
And then if we need to update the handbook piece to be consistent, because to have half the staff show up, to me, that doesn't make sense.
Mm-hmm.
But the other half, the staff wouldn't have to because their contract has something else.
May have, may have contract posts who may say something totally differently.
Correct. So, yeah, and I'd like to confirm that piece before I make a decision myself.
Yeah, I know, that makes perfect sense.
We would just see a poll.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I believe that all the employment contracts are available online too, so if you wanna take some time.
Yeah, it'll be on the administrator page.
Okay.
So moving on. All right. And next item on our agenda is the White Christmas tree lighting volunteer recognition. I don't have the names of everybody that helped light our tree, but I just wanna say thank you to those who did. Do you guys know, is there a list of names somewhere of everyone involved?
I couldn't. Well, it's all hearsay that I heard, so.
Yeah.
I think Gary might have started the wave and then I know Mr. Bonden reported as well.
Yeah, I know, I know, Mr. Bonden was involved.
Other people called into our office and I sent them to Gary, so.
What is ACS?
All construction services.
Oh, okay. Yeah, so the town is- Who did?
Cassie Foulge.
Cassie Foulge bought the lights.
Yeah, I know Gary was going to.
Can we also recognize though, why the White Christmas committee was not able to reach out to give them a way to help? We wanted to recognize. Don't get me wrong, we're all thankful that they came and did this. We were limited to what we could do. And we did not have any power or authority to make this happen. If we had asked for people to volunteer, the first person to volunteer is someone that you would not be allowed to have on the common. And you're advised by this ahead of time. And we took a lot of backlash on Facebook last week.
Wrong.
Everybody was praised for what was done, which we're thankful for. Don't get us wrong. We wanted the tree lit, but we could not do it. We did not have the means to do it.
No, I, I know. We all, we had-
I know you know.
We had three, we had three meetings about this, about getting the tree lit.
With three committees.
With three different committees and there's, the town just simply does not have the money to, to pay, to have the tree strung.
No. And we, we've had a volunteer do it the past years, up until now, that we're very fortunate to have, that this year we were not able to have. And that's what caused the issue. And to have a company hired to relight the tree, we didn't have the funds to pay that company is really what it came down to. It's not that anybody didn't want to.
Right.
We tried to figure out what other ways we could do it.
Think I had a tune of $7,000, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, $7,000 the town didn't have.
In the White Christmas committee, we didn't have. Nobody had it.
Nobody had it, huh?
Yeah.
But now we're being questioned on where are the funds at? Have we collabed? Why didn't we do it? Why didn't we reach out to the community? We don't have that control. We can't say to anybody, you can go work on this tree. We've gotta get permits, we've gotta get insurance, we've gotta do this, we've gotta do that. Jimmy Russ could always do that. He worked for the town and he had his own insurance. That's why we can only hire someone to do it that, we have to pay $7,000. The way we were set up to make, to look bad was very disappointing.
Who do you think set you up to look bad? Us? Just the board of selection?
Uh, no, another committee that we were trying to work with.
Is there anybody here from the common committee?
I don't think so.
I, I know Diane was here. I think it would be unfair to have, continue this conversation without somebody from the common committee here.
Can I interject? Because after the very first meeting, we left and the common committee did not have any words to speak during that meeting. And then we all left. And then members of the community informed us that these are videotaped online and pointed us to the YouTube channel where there was a continued conversation about the White Christmas committee there with the common committee.
I think, if I remember correctly, I think during the comment piece, they asked, we asked- asked them if they had anything to add.
And they didn't until we. And you continue to allow them to talk.
Well, we would allow people to talk, it's a topic on our agenda, and honestly, this is a small community. It'd be nice if we could all work together, pull together in one direction, we've got enough financial challenges, we, we need to start working together, whatever, whether it's the White Christmas, whether it's the Common, we need to start working together instead of blaming each other. We would like to. It's the only way we're going to resolve some of these issues.
I would just like to add too, we're going to publicly thank the town that has stepped up this year. I think the town should probably thank Jimmy for his.
Absolutely.
Eighteen years.
Yeah, of course.
I think that would be very hurtful to Jimmy here.
I agree.
Yeah. But unfortunately, I don't know Jimmy's last name.
Jimmy Russ.
Jim Russ. I'd like to thank Jim Russ for the last eighteen years of, of handling the, doing the work on the tree.
Yep, yep. Again, it's been very appreciative.
Yeah, we've seen it. I know, you guys did everything you could have done within the timeframe, I'm happy that everyone came forward and moved forward, but we know what you've done to try to get that lit during those times, so.
I know, I know, you guys know that, like, we were all in the same room, it just was really heartfelt, it was always to watch the community kind of bash us, and not, they were just misinformed, you know?
Unfortunately, that happens a lot online.
Yeah.
That happens quite a bit online.
And I think that's why we all agreed to put a letter together from all three.
Yeah.
At least together to, for, to explain what happened, just so that way it would be out there.
So moving on, the next item on our agenda is the fiscal year 26 budget and hiring and purchase freeze, discussion and possible votes. Well, we all, you sent us a letter with, with how you'd like to handle it, right, an email?
Draft.
Yeah.
They sent a draft. They asked that you all review it, but you had given me the directive to do so, and, and that was a result of conversation between advisory and Board of Selectmen, and.
That was from the last meeting.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, did you see the draft?
I did see the draft.
Yeah.
I looked somewhere.
I don't think there were any dollars in it.
No, yeah, I printed it. I printed it home, stuck there. So I was hoping that it met.
I know you asked us if we'd respond individually, and I looked at it this afternoon, and I didn't have any concerns with it.
So I was just hoping that it met the spirit of what you were looking for it to accomplish, and I had sent an email out to the department heads today, and I have scheduled a department head meeting to discuss the fiscal 27 budget preparation, and it'll include discussion of Proposition Two and a Half, what that process, pulling it all together will be looking like, and.
And we.
Over the schedule, which I've fine tuned, and we will also, I'll be discussing the budget freeze and distributing that to everyone.
When, oh, excuse me, when do we have to have a dollar amount for the Two and a Half over?
So, well.
For the proposed Two and a Half over?
Right, and John had given you?
Some numbers.
Those numbers, right.
We didn't come up with anything. We didn't vote.
Basically, the board's going to need to vote on a number to put.
You're going to need to vote on that. So if you want to just jump in, we can do that. I was going to give you a copy of the schedules that I put together, and I, this is for the budget preparation, but I also included the Proposition Two and a Half, so that we didn't lose sight of that. There will be a separate schedule just focused on that, that will also outline the plan and what that's going to look like. So when you're asking about that, we have to notify the, let me see here, right here, let's go under, on the last page, there's a summary timeline overview, and if you look at that submission of the ballot question to the town clerk, which would need to be no later than March 26th. So you could do it at, if you are going to have another meeting, let's say, January 23rd, or if you wanted to do it at the beginning of February. So I, I do have some questions about the dollar amount that I would like you guys to consider as well, you know, whether or not you plan on including those, so I think that, I don't know if you plan on having a meeting just to discuss that, or one of the things that I wanted to bring up is that the town had, you had hired the Collins Center to do the benchmarking, and then it kind of fell the wayside in that and kind of got a little out of date, so a group of us have polished it off and started working on it, and then there's been some schedule conflicts and that, but where it was left off, we have a rough number, and so I'd like that group to go back, review, and then I would like you to consider adding that number, that dollar amount, what the increase would look like, onto that Proposition Two and a Half number. And the reason I say that is that, so you went forward with the benchmarking, recognizing that the employees aren't, many of them are not paid what, you know, they should be paid, and, and then we dusted off to go forward with good faith in getting it to a point where we could implement it should we decide to do so, and I think that, I think you have to seriously consider bringing it to the next step, because if you don't, I don't know, I don't know at which point it would be to be brought up again. So it's just something, I'm putting it out there for you guys to think about.
Do you have a dollar amount that would cost the town to implement?
Well, I, I would like for the group to, because there's only been one that's been able to, to land on a number so far, but I think together, so in the next, you know, couple of weeks or so, if we could do that, and even if I'm not here, we could still Zoom, call, whatever, to see if we can, can do that, and then you guys would have something to talk about, but I just don't want to lose sight of it.
Yeah.
And I think that, you know, times are tough, so.
Yeah.
Anyway, so.
Okay.
So anyway, to answer your question, was in March, this last timetable, the timeline overview, the summary, just gives you a nice quick snapshot.
So the Board of Selectmen, either the January 23rd or the beginning of February, would be taking a vote to have the Proposition Two and a Half election and for a certain dollar amount.
Well, yeah, really, what you'll be doing is we're going to want that, so we have the draft question, and so you're going to want to vote on the ballot question.
Right, so the ballot question and the dollar amount.
Right.
It's, yep, that's in there.
Okay.
Yep. So, so that may end up being the beginning of February, so that way it gives some time for the work group to.
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
It takes care of the timeline for that, but.
Right.
What do you want to do? Teresa, put the memo together for the department heads about the hiring freeze and the purchase freeze?
Yep, and I'm fine with implementing her memo as, as written.
Do you want to vote to?
So we just need to.
It's your policy.
Hmm?
This is your policy.
Yep.
Right.
Make a motion to institute that policy for May 26th at this time?
Yeah, make a motion for a minute.
You both made a motion, I need someone to second the motion.
Oh, second.
Any further discussion on this issue? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we are now in a hiring freeze and purchasing freeze. Next item on the agenda is the warrants.
Make a motion to approve fiscal 26 AP warrant number 12 and the fiscal 26 payroll warrant number 12 as presumption.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I was going to say all the permits.
Yeah, a poster from your envelope.
Yep.
Just at the top, just a base, and then I would be at the top. Yes.
I need those. Yeah.
Really licenses.
It's really licenses, okay, licenses for approval.
So total 2026, anything filled with ABCC, common viculars, entertainment license, device licenses, raffles. And we can send that extra, so.
Proven by category, and then read off the names?
Yeah.
Want to do it that way?
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay. Make a motion for the 2026 ABCC retail license renewals. I have Davis Corp. doing business as Spirit Shop, Country Corner Sitco doing business as Country Corner, Salem Cross Inn, Adams Coney through American Legion Post number 244, Sri Sai Ram doing business as Main Street Liquors, Jen's Incorporated doing business as Northeast Pizza, and Hitchcock Tavern Inc. doing business as Hitchcock Tavern.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Nothing?
Make a motion for the 2026 common victualer licenses, Salem Cross Inn, Country Corner Sitco Inc. doing business as Country Corner, Adams Coney through American Legion Post 244, Jen's Inc. doing business as Northeast Pizza, Hitchcock Tavern Inc. doing business as Hitchcock Tavern, Key Arsenal doing business as Ragged Hill Orchards, Dugard Drive-In doing business as Howard's Drive-In, Central Mass Donuts LLC doing business as Dunkin' Donuts, Sip Happens, and Joint Hinton DBA Joy of Beans.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Make a motion to approve the 2026 entertainment license, Salem Cross Inn, Monday to Saturday, Hitchcock Tavern Inc. doing business as Hitchcock Tavern, Monday to Sunday, Adams Coney through American Legion Post 244, Monday to Sunday.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion for the 2026 device licenses to be renewed, Adams Coney through American Legion Post number 244, two devices, a pool table and a jukebox.
Second.
Make a motion for the 2026 raffle license renewals, Adams Coney through American Legion Post 244, nonprofit and.
Hitchcock Tavern.
And no.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So just that, Adams Coney through American Legion Post 244.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next item on the agenda is the tenure report.
I will pass the schedules out. Did you all get a copy of the schedule?
Yes.
Okay, and so I'll be sending that along to the advisory committee, and it'll be distributed to all the departments as well. So we already touched base on what I'm working on as far as the budgets and the Proposition Two and a Half preparations, and there's just been a lot of focus, the changes taking place within the fire department as well, so it's been a lot of time spent there. I had a meeting yesterday with CMRPC and Highway Superintendent and Water Commission, Commissioner's Chair.
Commissioner.
To talk about CDBG funding, and what they've got to do is a, a survey on the income for central and front street area, but we may be able to, if that comes back favorable and meets the eligibility requirements, we may be able to use CDBG funding towards the water line replacement in combination with the highway project that they had applied for initially, for down in that area with their senior center, so we'll see if we're able to bring that together. So Highway has a lot of information that they will be able to share, and the Water Department and Pioneer, I mean, not Pioneer Valley, CMRPC will be working on pulling that together. If so, and that looks favorable, then we'll go forward, the application timeframe is, is quick, I'm going to say the deadline is, is coming up, it will be, be pretty quick. There is no, there would be no financial obligation on the town if, if, let's say, complete streets or any of the other grant applications put forward, that, you know, your application may get higher scores if there is a town share matching, we would be able to use the CDBG work as that contribution, so. So that was good news. Yeah, and that's pretty much all I got for you tonight.
That's all you have?
Yeah, that's, that's pretty much all we've got. You know, you will be going forward pretty soon with the implementation of your master plan update, and so CMRPC will be in touch with the planning board and kind of coordinate that, so you have an existing plan that needs to be implemented, and then at the same time, we'll be working on the update for that, which will be a focus on the economic development and corridor study.
All right.
Thank you, Teresa.
Any other business? Comments and concerns?
Well, I'll get to bring mine up. I took a job in DC, I will be leaving December 28th, so I'll be timoring my resignation as a select board member of Vicuilly December 27th.
One hundred and fifty.
Appreciate the time.
Thank you for your, your service, Liz. Do, we have to find out if we have to have a special election, or given that, I'll put together a special election, we could just let it go vacant until the general election is made?
And I'd be willing to help and everything, but I know I'd be living in Virginia, so temporarily back and forth, so I don't think that would look very well.
You don't think you're allowed to anymore once you leave?
So.
Do you not have a point and interest?
No.
I don't think we're allowed to.
Selectmen can.
Oh.
Selectmen can't play as selectmen. Everybody else but us.
Mm-hmm. Um, there's a number of people here with their comments and concerns here.
Mike.
Uh, I said, uh, to bring up an issue, do we have to be on the agenda?
Generally, unless the chair says, "Okay, let's hear what you have to say," we may add it to another agenda further on down the road.
It's, um, the snowy move on Beach Drive.
Okay.
There is none.
Is Beach Drive a private way?
Yes.
All right, um...
It's off of Lake Shore.
Well, it's all a private way, isn't it, down there? Yeah, it is.
Lake Shore, Beach, hillside.
Yeah, 'cause I'm off of Lake Shore Extension, so. Yeah, how, how long of a road is it?
Beach Drive?
Yeah, I've never been down there.
Approximately 600 feet, maybe, I would say.
Okay. Were they plowing years, were you plowing years past?
Yes.
Yes, it was in Holland. She's been there since 1915.
The 60s.
You've been on Beach Drive since then?
Side moves, about 60s, yes. So always one year old. So it might be something we need to...
I think we have to talk to, we'd have to talk to Jim.
I, I think what the issue is, is that, uh, at one point, they were able to do that section of the road.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and then what occurred is that they're not able to turn around at the end, because the person that owns the property put a wire across, okay? So now, no one's able to turn around. So I guess Jim feels that it's too dangerous, okay, uh, for them to back up, because they would have to back up instead of turning around, okay?
Okay.
Uh, our option would be, if that is the case, uh, wondering if Jim, and we have spoken to Jim, and he says he can be overridden by, obviously, the selectmen, okay? So obviously, what he's doing is putting it back onto you, right? Uh, but we were wondering if, if they can't bring a sander and a plow truck down, that maybe a town pickup truck could go down, and it would have an easier time to turn around. Or they could bring a loader down.
Yeah, I don't, so, I know for a lot of the, like I said, I'm off of Lake Shore Drive Extension.
Yeah.
And it's a small truck that comes up to plow us. So I don't know if a smaller truck, I mean, the one that came up, I think is, this last one was just like a F-250.
Well, that's what I'm saying, if you truck like that, there shouldn't be any difficulty doing it.
Well, was it...
It wasn't private, yeah.
Was it the contractor?
I think it was the contractor.
He, he was told not to do beach.
Yes.
Okay, so what I think we need to do is, um, you know, put this on an agenda.
Okay.
We said, we can do it, we, we're trying to keep the agenda prior to Christmas pretty small, but we can add it to the first agenda of the new year. Um, and that way we can maybe get Jim in here, and, uh...
Well, they need to be really addressed sooner than later, because obviously...
Yeah, you never know how much it's gonna snow out there.
One of the issues is, though, they, they stop plowing and just leave a pile of snow. So it's not just a physical plow, it's that...
You can't, they're blocking you in.
Yeah, it can't.
Yeah, well, they can't, they shouldn't do that.
So.
Have you, did you guys bring that up, did you?
He, that's where he told me to stop, yeah.
But there's a fire hydrant in the middle of Wallace. That's not, there's no, after seasonal fire hydrant.
All right.
And Mike has offered to let him turn around on his own property. Now, it's private property, we get that that may be a liability issue, but he's willing to absolve them to, in writing.
Who, uh, has anyone spoken to the property owner that put the wire up?
Yes, we did.
And what did they say? Tell them?
Nothing.
Well, you, first of all, you have to realize that they're not a resident full-time.
They're seasoned.
They're seasoned. Okay.
And the fire hydrant is on their property.
In the letter that we wrote to them, we also mentioned to them that if there's a fire, you know, and, and the fire trucks can't get down, of course, now their property is...
At risk, sure.
And also, emergency on the...
Well, you can't, you can't block a hydrant.
I can say, is the fire hydrant past the wire that they put up? So you can't get to the fire hydrant?
They didn't block the street.
They blocked their driveway.
They blocked their driveway.
Where they can get to the wire.
Okay, that's what I was thinking.
But were they using, was he using the fire?
No, you can't get to it.
So how is it, how is that impede the town from plowing then? If he's blocking his own driveway?
There's other options to turn around, but that's where they always did turn around.
So is it, you know, at the end of the road is where the wire is this way?
Yes.
Or is it along the side?
It's along the side.
All right, let's...
Let me ask you another question. Would be a possibility that the town could send a letter to the owner, and, and just express to the owner, you know, in regards to the, um, you know, complications of fire, medical help, ambulance going down, and so forth down the line?
And emergencies on the lake as well, because that brings you really close to that area.
Mm-hmm.
You know, if someone were to fall through the ice
Yeah.
in the wintertime, you know, that would impede the fire department's response time to get down on the ice too. Not do their thing.
What if it's their driveway? If, if it's on, on their driveway, you can't stop them from, they can ask.
No, we're, we're hoping for other options.
You want to see pictures? I actually sent him to the fire department, guy on his last day.
Okay.
And I should mention too, there's, you know, close to 100 people, residents on Lake Shore Drive, in all the extensions, so it's, it's not a, obviously, a small area where it's spread out.
Right. I will put ideas and suggestions, guys.
Would, like, maybe a smaller vehicle, even the day after the storm?
So I can, I can speak to it a little bit, Anne, I'm the department admin at Highway. Um, I know, I know that Jim did, during good weather, bring our smallest vehicle down there, and he said it wasn't, it wasn't a safe, there wasn't a safe place to turn around, was his determination. Um, he didn't even have the pedal on the truck, and felt that it wasn't safe. Um, that, the, right where Beach Drive is, it does sort of drop off, um, unless you're really... I mean, if, if the truck were to slide on ice, it could fall into the lake.
Yeah, we don't want that to happen.
So it, it is, it is because of those neighbors blocking off the place that was always the turnaround there, that, um, is, is causing us not to be able to service that road anymore. Um, that, that is the problem, that's the crux of the problem.
So we were turning around in somebody's private driveway before?
It, it was, it, yes.
And he's offering to do that still.
So, but where he is, it's not, Jim said it's not, it's not doable.
So it sounds like the only option we may have is if we request the person to allow us to do that.
Yeah.
If they give us the permission to do that, then it sounds like Jim could continue to do what he's done, but because of the block off, we can't. And it's really up to this person, we could ask.
It's a, yeah, and it's a private way, so it's, the town doesn't really have a whole lot of say over, over what we can, to...
Right, especially with the cuts that we're, we're seeing.
Yeah.
It's really to add on any more roads at this point.
Well, I mean, it was done, it was always in the past.
It was done previously, correct.
I, I certainly, I don't, I don't have a problem with, with the board writing a letter to you guys.
I don't, I...
On their behalf?
I look at it this way, it doesn't hurt to ask.
No.
If they say no, then we don't have much choice.
No.
Because Jim is finding that we can't.
Right.
And because of that.
Right.
Can't make somebody take down something on their property.
Would the bucket be an option, like the next day?
I, I don't really answer that, that's definitely a Jim question.
Yeah. If you want, so...
Somebody needs, if I needed ambulance, or somebody needs the fire hydrant, we're just trying to...
Or even if there's a water main break down there, power lines.
I should mention too, that the, uh, when you have garbage pickup, they do back up, and the trucks are much larger than the town truck.
It's a valid point.
Much larger.
But they're also not doing it during a snowstorm?
But we're, we're saying...
I, I mean, I'm just, devil's advocate. If it's having snow and you're in the middle of the night, and you're not back up, yeah, yeah, but next day, I'm...
We're also saying the next day could be plowed, so we're not saying you have to do it during a storm, true.
We're not being unreasonable, we're just being some kind of...
No, no, you're not being, no, 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 you're not being, not being unreasonable.
Trying to find a solution.
Not being unreasonable at all, um, so, but, um...
And if the person says no, then we see if there's some alternative with Jim, if there is, or it's something else that we've tried every avenue and we'll see what we can do.
Just one of the things that I just don't understand is, you hire a contractor to do the private roads, and before he even plows the road, Jim Daley tells him, "Don't go beyond here."
Well, it's, it's liability.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's Jim's job, to determine what's safe and what isn't safe to plow. I know there's some other roads in town that we don't plow, for safety reasons.
Yeah.
Um, but what happens if the contractor that's hired will do it? You know, outside of it, then I think you folks would have to pay for it.
No, no, I'm talking about, because the person that he's referring to would be willing to plow, but he was told not to.
If, again, if you want to hire him privately to plow when he's willing to do it, that's up to your associate, your lake, your lake association, right? But as a contractor, he works for Jim, and Jim tells him what to plow and what not to plow. And, you know, we, we put a lot of faith and trust in Jim, in what's safe to do and what isn't safe to do. So, uh, as a board, I don't think, like, we have any problem writing a letter to the homeowner, asking them to please remove that wire during the winter months, so that we can safely plow, uh, and, and get ambulances and get all, you know, for all the reasons you so eloquently stated, um...
Can we take a look at the letter?
Of course, yeah.
Yeah, remove it, even if, I, I don't know, Anne, if you know, even if the wire's backed up, the person's probably, probably trying to prevent cars from going down close to the house, is what I'm guessing.
Right.
So even if the wire isn't down where it is, but farther?
It's like a little plastic yellow chain, at one point, I had a discussion with them in the summer about last winter, and, uh, they said, "Well, we'll give the highway guys a key, key for..."
They're not gonna get out of a truck to unlock it.
Not in the storm.
No.
We would. But we would.
So would he give you guys a key?
I don't know.
I don't know.
He's offered to me, so he said, "Give it..." Twin brother, one said he, highway department get a key, and the other guy's, "I don't know about that."
So we'll see.
So they're pleasant then?
What brother would write this letter to?
Well, it's, it's confusing, it's the parents that own the cottage, okay?
Right.
And, and the two sons basically have taken over because the parents are elderly.
Right. So what was, so last year was the chain there?
Last year was a chain.
Yeah, yeah.
So were you plowed last year?
No, no.
No, all right.
I was hoping it would change with the contractor.
Okay, I hear you, all right.
But we were plowed part of winter.
Yeah, part of the winter last year.
Part of the winter last year, we were plowed.
In the beginning?
It was like the last couple storms.
Yeah, you probably tried it, and then...
And we can certainly add you to our next agenda on the 23rd if you'd like, and we can ask Jim to come and join us, and, and he can, you know, state his case. Um, we have no problem doing that, and we can, you know, we'll obviously write the letter to that property owner, and ask him to move the chain back so that we can safely turn around, or have access to the hydrant is nice, too.
Providing.
But it seems like it's a safety issue in all directions, so, you know, if, if he deems it that it's not safe, and Mike is saying that he's allowing to turn around in his driveway, and it's a smaller vehicle, or that's, you know, we have a solution.
Well, that's why, that's kind of why we need Jim here to discuss it as well.
That's also the, the closest hydrant to my, in the Lake Shore Extension.
Oh, is it? I have a hydrant right near my house, so I'm okay. But thank you for your concern.
The first, the first couple of houses, uh, Lake Shore, my next door neighbor, I mean, there's no hydrant, that's, this hydrant question's the closest one to that end of the street.
Yeah, I know exactly where you are. Um, yeah, something else you want to contribute?
No, no, we're just...
Do we have contact information for the owners?
Yeah.
I can get it through Renee. If we know which piece of property it is?
Yep.
And we know, I can find out.
The addresses, yes.
They live in Springfield.
Sorry?
They live in Springfield, I can't give you the address.
Okay, yeah, if we have the exact number.
I can do that, he'll drop it off to you.
Okay.
Will you automatically be added to the next meeting, or is it June, or can we do as soon as...
It'll be December, it'll be December 23rd, and, and...
Do we have to do anything to get on that meeting?
No.
No.
We've added you, or we'll add you.
Right, that's all.
That's right, we're the one that makes all the decisions. What's your hours here, so I know?
Uh, 8 to 4, Monday to Thursday.
And you're not on Friday?
No. You can put under the door as well, if you want to put anything there.
I'll be here Thursday, I'll give you the address, phone number and so forth.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you for coming in, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brad, good luck. Thank you. Wish it was longer.
Any other comments, concerns? Next, uh, Board of Selectmen, I think our meeting will be December 23rd at 6:00 PM. I will accept a motion.
Motion!
Your last meeting? You realize this is being recorded, everybody's gonna agree, you guys, "Get me out!"
Actually, the 23rd will be the last meeting, but...
Oh, you'll be here on the 23rd.
There'll be one more. Wait, wait, Stormwater? Stormwater?
Oh, yeah, yeah, well, hey, effective, uh...
All right. Our meeting's adjourned.